I'd like to call this meeting to order.
I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. To approve of the agenda, we have two additions. One under the correspondence would be Jeff White's EMS report, monthly report. And then under new business, we'll have to approve the parks and rec local village that we just got from our auditors.
If there's no other additions or changes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
Awesome, alright. Moved by Stevens, supported by Anderson, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're approving the agenda with two. With two additions. Under correspondence, Jeff White's EMS report. And under eight, under new business, H. Parks and Rec Local Village. Okay? Motion carries. Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of our minutes of our regular meeting on Tuesday, June 9th.
I have the motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Tuesday, June 9th, 2021.
I'll support that.
Motion made by Anderson, supported by Stevens to approve our minutes of Tuesday, June 9th. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next under the agenda is our correspondence. I got an email. Oh, I didn't tell you. Sorry, I skipped you. Will go to our treasurer.
We began the month with $527,988.10. We took in receipts of $12,177.18. And we made disbursements in the amount of $79,233.94, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $460,931.29.
I have a question there.
Yes.
Under the itemized areas of the receipts, for local community, it shows $12,000.
$12,600. See if they line it up. No, cross out that, I'm sorry, cross out that $12,000 that carried over from last year's, last month's report. The local community stabilization from the state was $6,137.67.
Okay, so for $12,000, that's.
Yeah, that just carried over.
Okay.
I'll double check that for you though, before I, before I commit this. I think it might have, because the local stabilization was two lines.
Yeah.
It might have carried over from previous things. I'll check it before I file it.
With such a case like this, should we approve it as a condition that if there's a problem?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve as a condition. If the treasurer, if the treasurer Stover checks and it works out well, minus the $12,603.85, it'd be approved.
I'll support that.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson, to approve the financial report.
Yeah.
Yeah, roll call vote.
Well, yeah.
No, we don't need a roll call.
Wait a minute, but when I say condition, if there's a problem.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
We'll bring it back to the next meeting.
It'd be a just a title.
Most likely, yes.
Right. Motion by Stevens with the correction of the $12,603.85, supported by Anderson. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye, and you know what? That $12,000 doesn't belong here, because if you add up nine, two, and seven, you have to get to eighteen. So, that carried over from last month and didn't void itself out.
So, it would not be in there.
No. So, the ending balance is right.
Okay.
So, now, what about the motion?
Well, just let it stand.
I'm just gonna double check.
She's gonna double check.
Yeah, so let it stand.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I need a vote.
I already did it. We all said aye.
Dan said aye?
Yeah. I saw, four ayes, I mean, five ayes.
Five guys, four ayes.
Five ayes? Okay. Alright, correspondence. I received an email from I-69 thumb region placing mini grant that we did get the $2,000. They sent me another email where I had to sign again, approving that we are entitled to that money. So, they are gonna, and that money is used to place signs of where our park is, is to bring people to our park.
Alright, great, good deal.
Did you hear me? He did hear me, okay. Yeah, it is great. Next on the agenda was the correspondence from I-R-A Fire Runs. As she read, two medical PI, an investigation on fire of a vehicle. And Jeff White's are quite involved. You can read him at your leisure, he always gives the, he usually comes, but because of COVID, you know, he just emailed this. And as you can see in the back, he lists, you know, each one.
Yeah, they've been busy.
Yes, they have. Okay. Under old business, we have Mr. Clemmons with a pod on his property. I had told them that we had changed temporary use for pods on the property of $3,500. And he wanted to become, come before the board because he still thinks it's too much money. Mr. Clemmons?
Hi, my name's Ken, I appreciate you guys' time today, consideration. I know you guys have already talked about this pod on my property. So, I just wanted to come in and give everyone a little bit of insight, because I believe it's important to know my situation and what I've got going on. So, I sold my house, I put my house up for sale before the state shut down. My house sold while the state was shut down. So, I had to move all my items from my home and my business somewhere. There was no storage containers or storage places available, everything was closed down. I was actually put in a hard position because I don't have anywhere to put my stuff. So, I ended up purchasing the storage container. Not sure if you guys are familiar with my property, but it's in the middle of a field. I love the country, I love the views, my intentions aren't to keep this thing and store my items in it. I know some residents do that, that's their business, but that's not what I'm trying to do. I was forced to put this there. It cost me $2,700 to have this put on my property, so I could put my items in it. So, I had somewhere to put my possessions while the state was closed down. I'm currently living in K-Pac right now with my in-laws while I built my home. This home is for my family, I have two kids. I was really hoping to come into the community and be a contributing member to the community. I run a business construction company, I typically sponsor Little League teams, that kind of stuff. I'd like to get more involved with the communities that I'm, that I'm currently living in. But, at the end of the day, I understand there's a fee for $7,500 for that container to be on site. And I'm gonna be honest, I had no idea, I was unaware, and really didn't even have a choice to do this. I'm aware that you guys have all met and voted on this particular item, which I'm glad I've been able to have a chance to come in today and talk to you guys personally about it. The bond on my house, I'm building a 2,300 square foot ranch, the bond on my house is around $1,000. So, then it's $3,500 for a pod on my container, on my, on my property, which I don't intend on keeping. And then, there's something new here that I didn't realize until I read this packet. And it says that "The certificate of occupancy would not be issued until such time temporary use was removed." No one had brought that to my attention until I sat down and read this paper today.
It's in the application packet.
It's in the application.
It is.
Okay, I didn't, what application?
Well, you didn't read it. I understand, you know, it's a lot to read, but the information was there.
In what application?
The new home application packet.
All that is in there with all the fees.
No, no, no.
That's the miniature reading, right?
No, so I'm reading, yeah, I'm reading what you guys have here and it says.
At the last meeting.
It says that the inspector suggested that, that he would not issue the certificate of occupancy until the temporary structure was moved. So, if I paid the $3,500 right now for a permit, isn't it for six months?
With two extensions.
With two extensions.
So, that gives you eighteen months.
So, so why all of a sudden, would, would, because my items are in there, I can't move into my, how am I gonna move my items out of the house? Into my house if the container's there with my items in it and I can't get my occupancy until the container's moved?
Wait a minute, what items? Are you talking about your house items?
Yeah.
Your house items should not be in there.
They are.
Why are they in there? You told me your work items were in there.
They are in there, that's why the container's so big. My work items are in there as well, construction materials that I needed for that project.
That pod is only to be used for work site stuff, not for your.
You are more welcome to come look in there, there's worksite items in there.
It's only to be used for work stuff, not to store your house stuff.
So, I'm, I'm an honest guy. I'm here telling you guys the truth right now, and what is going on with this container. I'm looking for some help here, I don't know why there's a fight.
There's not a fight, sir.
No, when was the container placed under property?
It was April, I could tell you, I don't know exact date, but it was in the middle of April. I can get, I can get you guys all the information you want when I sell my house.
April 2020.
Absolutely.
Okay, so it's only been a few months from that. How long do you expect your house to be finished?
I'm trying to be in there by October.
Okay.
We've made really good progress.
Is it the thing you can't pay the bond for the, is that the $3,500 is a hardship to?
It is, absolutely.
Other people have had to pay.
I have no problem with him storing household goods while his house is built.
Okay, then we'll let that hurt, bro.
Yeah, but the thing is, you know, the bond is.
I just want for you to reduce.
And I have, and the reason I brought up my home bond, because it says that it's in line, and I get that this is $7,500. I understand that if I was a company coming in and I wanted to put this on, on the property and, and use it to house construction materials, I understand why the bond's there, so you guys make sure it removes it. But I was in an unfortunate situation, stuck, and I had no other choice but to put it on my property. You know, I'm not, I'm not constructing, I didn't put it on, I didn't put it, excuse me, I didn't put it on my property to keep it. I don't want it there.
Well, it's not.
I have a problem, I don't have a problem paying a bond, but the amount was too much. And then I come in here, I read that I won't get a certificate of occupancy until I pay the amount. Or until I move my items into the home, I'm sorry, until the container's gone.
Right, and you even said you would have it off by the time you're done building your house.
Right.
Okay, it's not gonna take you, it's not gonna take longer than eighteen months for you to build a home?
Absolutely not, no.
We can give you extensions on the pod.
I have no problem paying that, I have no problem paying that.
Okay, we can get you extensions on the pod, that won't be a problem.
So, I don't want the pod, I don't need an extension, I need a lower amount. I don't have a problem putting an amount on the container to guarantee it's gonna be gone.
Yeah, but we are ready to lower it substantially.
I understand that, and I understand that the ordinance is in place for reasons of people putting on the property storm in there. I didn't put it there to try to hide it from anyone, it's in the middle of a field.
We, we didn't think you did.
Well.
We didn't think you did.
So, the big issue is the amount, was it $3,500?
Sure, I don't have a mortgage, I didn't get a mortgage to build my home. I'm doing this all out of my own pocket, and I have a tight budget over there, I'm trying to do the best I can, and then, you know, this kind of thing comes up, and it's, it's tough.
And if, if I may speak on behalf of the building department, if your issue is, you've got the home items in the pod, and not gonna get your CMO unless that pod is removed, Roland will work with you. I, I, I have confidence in that, if that's your issue, you've gotta get your home items out of that pod into the house. He will work with you and probably give you some leeway to get that, because you're gonna lose your bond. You're gonna stand to lose $3,500. So, it's, it's on you to get the pod out of there.
Yeah, and I, I don't want the pod.
Oh, once you get your house done, okay, once you get the CMO, say.
Thirty days, thirty days to get it out of there.
Okay, well, once, once, once you get that certificate of occupancy.
Well, here's Roland, right?
How long will it take you to move all your stuff from there, from the pod into the house?
I, I don't have much.
It's on the property, the house is.
Come, come look in there, I implore you guys to come look, I don't have nothing to hide.
Well, will it take you a day to get the stuff out of the pod? Roland, there shouldn't be an issue, Roland's right here.
It's just, it's just, you, I mean, you know why we have.
Absolutely, and I'm not trying to fight that, I'm just trying to give a little bit of help here. And when I, honestly, I got a little worked up because I read that last line in there, and it was not brought to my attention until I sat down today.
No, to me, that's reasonable, then, you have your stuff in the pod, you're building your house right next to it. When Roland there gives us, say, hey, you can move into there, it won't take long, and you're moving stuff in.
Absolutely not, no.
I mean, but you realize though, the pod, you need to pay a bond on it to ensure that.
I was, yeah, I, I do understand that, yes. I was just, the reason I came here today, like I originally stated in the beginning, when I was looking to have it deducted a little more. That's all, because of my situation. I didn't put this there because I, because I wanted it there.
No. He wants it reduct, us to do another reduction. See, we can't just do a reduction for you, we have to do a whole reduction for everybody. We can't just do it for you.
Another one's requesting a reduction of the bond.
Right.
We can't just do it for you, we have to do it for everybody, can't do that. Am I right?
Just, just the, just the required bond, by that.
That, yeah, that's correct.
So, I definitely.
Okay. But Dan said he doesn't, like he says, he doesn't care what's in the bond, he doesn't think it's, you know, we can't reduce it for you when we're making it the same for everybody else.
Sure.
Do they allow an assurity bond on it, or they could go to the insurance company or the bank and get an assurity bond?
I'm not.
I'm not, I'm not even sure what an assurity bond is.
Well, you pay X amount of dollars covering the $3,500.
Okay. Alright, yeah.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear him.
Alright, when he says, reassuming we have that, in case it comes down to somebody doesn't move it, we've got the money to go in and move it.
Sure, I understand that, absolutely, I understand that.
He understands that, Dan.
Yeah, and what I was trying to say is.
I know, I don't know that we do either, and we've never had to, and I hope we never have to.
And, and.
Okay.
What I was just trying to point out was that the insignificant difference in the bond price for the pod versus building a home bond. It's the same thing. The bond is my guarantee to finish that home, correct? Where I lose the bond, right, on the home?
Well, more or less, I mean, that sure wouldn't cover to build a house.
Sure, no, and.
All that helps us is to cover the lawyer to get rid of it.
Right.
I lost the gun. Yeah, but the pod too, you could understand that. You're most, you're probably, most likely, you're probably a good guy, you mind getting your house done, all your stuff in there, get the pod out of there. But there's, we have to think that, so, well, that pod, I'm gonna store other stuff in there, you know, so.
Right, I understand that, I understand that. And I, and like I said, I don't have a problem paying a bond, I just thought it was, compared to my bond on my home, I thought it was just a lot. And I do appreciate you guys working with me on it, but it is.
Which I didn't have.
Right, I know, I know, I appreciate that. Because if you didn't, I would've just been like, well, do what you gotta do, I'll be honest.
He, I'm sorry, your last name, sir?
Clemmons.
I'm sorry, Clemmons. Here's the thing, is when you get the C of occupancy, just that period, you know, to move the stuff in, to me, that could be.
Essentially, he's gonna ask for a temporary C of O. Give him occupancy so he can take the stuff out of the pod, because his, all his household stuff's in the pod. He's gonna take it out of the pod and put it in the house.
Oh, yeah.
That's why he needs a C.
No, I'm not doing that. Okay, what if Phil would gain some leeway, he gets his occupancy full blown on the house, and then, we could give him a little bit of time to then move the stuff from the pod into the house. You mean, what, he's got a C of O in house? Yeah.
I don't think he understood you. He's saying, when I get the C of O, he'll, I can move the stuff in there.
Right.
Right, right, okay, you'll issue a C of O so I can move myself in there.
When the house is done.
When the house is done, right, yep.
And then the pod.
Then we'll get the pod out.
Then I'll get the pod out, yeah, that was been the plan the whole time.
You still gotta put up a bond for it.
Yeah, I'll put up a bond for it, I just was asking the board to see if we could do more on it, so let's.
For what? What were you asking the board for?
To reduce it more.
To reduce it more than what it is now?
Yeah.
Well, it's like Danny said.
I understand that, you asked, you asked, and I was, I was, I answered.
Yeah, I told him I will put him on the agenda and see what we could do.
Yeah, so, how soon do you guys need $3,500?
Like yesterday.
Ken, I like can cut the grass and stuff.
Here we take natural.
No, no, I'm gonna take someone's dog, I'm helping.
We work at a cemetery, I got plenty of places to bury him.
When do you expect your house to be completed?
I'm hoping to be in there about, around October, I think I could be in there sooner, but I'm still working the paperwork.
Can you have it in this week? Can you have it in this week?
Potentially.
You can use that pod as a cemetery.
No. Could you? How about my next Monday?
Next Monday? Okay, I'm sure I can have it to you by then.
Okay. Next Monday?
Yeah.
Great, that would be great.
And we appreciate you coming before us, you know.
Yeah, I just thought it was only fair that I come in and able to talk and, and represent myself.
No, that we like when residents come in.
That's fine.
Well, I plan on being an active member of the community.
Good.
Someone give me the date for next Monday, please?
The 20th, 20th.
She's gonna call me, remind me?
I will.
She's the best, I love her.
I'll let Brenda call you.
I love Brenda, I like Brenda. Oh, not that I'm like. Well, every time you call me, you've been strong-armed me a little bit.
That's your job.
Yep.
Okay, so you'll be coming on Monday?
Yes, ma'am.
Just one, what's that, Daniel?
He's going to come in on Monday at 8:00.
Next Monday, right?
Next Monday.
Just this way.
Yeah, hey, Dan?
Put it in your phone.
Let me turn it on real quick, just one second.
Mr. Clemmons is gonna come in on Monday to pay the bond on the pod. And then, once he gets his house completed, he's estimated around October, when Roland grants him the occupancy, he will give him the time to move his goods from the pod into the house, and he'll, the pod will go away.
So, is the bond forthcoming, or is he just gonna remove it from the pod?
No, no, the bond is forthcoming, it'll be paid Monday.
Okay.
Yes, most acceptable, but it also refers to me, if the pod is out there without a bond, and you just got the pod off, maybe the whole thing would be gone at this point. But you would have been on the road for money that's often spent.
Yeah, no, the pod is there.
He needs it.
He needs it to put his goods in there while he's building his house.
Okay, we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Alright, thank you. Yeah, good luck, I hope you get your house.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it.
We look forward to seeing you.
On good terms?
Yes.
Alright, you be careful.
Alright, take care.
Okay.
I'll turn you, Dan, whoever's speaking.
Alright. Next on the agenda is new business, the payment of our park and rec taxes. An amount of $1,843.30.
I make a motion to pay our parks and recs taxes at the amount of $1,843.30.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Colleen, by Stover, to pay our, our park and recs taxes. This will be a roll call vote. Stevens, oh, one man, one person.
Stevens?
Yes.
Anderson, yes. Anderson, yes.
Okay, look, here's Jennifer.
Anderson, yes.
It's a roll call vote for to pay our park taxes.
All agree?
Yes.
Stover?
Yes.
Dan? Are you voting, Dan?
Dan, are you vote, roll call vote?
Yes, right.
Motion carries.
We got you, sir. We got you.
Next on the agenda is our liability insurance through Nickel and South. Is there any discussion on this?
I do have discussion on it. Okay. I had a seminar last week regarding hacking and whatnot on the computers for the election, and they did recommend to make sure we have terrorism insurance. And here it says that terrorism coverage as defined under the Terrorism Risk Insurance Act is excluded, yet can be secured for an additional $150.
We talk about that every year when this comes up, and we always turn it on.
They just recommended because there's, there's potential for our systems to get hacked, and they just recommend having that.
Okay. But is this... Did you look this up and see if this terrorism was for the computers and not for attack on us?
I did not.
But that, but I think that's part of the parcel.
It, okay, I didn't read it all.
We've always turned it down before.
Okay.
Um...
What?
If I look in the mass, is our repel action terrorism insurance act very hard to get certified? That something actually terrorist act, that doesn't somehow look like one, and then it wasn't, and it's insurable. So, there was, it was a very low likelihood that the terrorists got through there, and it, again, it's very difficult for us to truly get certified for the government that has that in the context. I think the other...
Hacking into a system.
I don't know about paper that insurance, I just want to give a background for what it is.
But Jennifer, they said if we're hacked, our election computers...
It's not even just election, like, it's all of our stuff in general, but the election stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that terrorism insurance coverage would cover that.
Well, we'd have to, like Patty said, look into it and see exactly what this Terrorism Risk Insurance Act, what it covers.
We could always...
It's a hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Why don't we just...
It's probably worth it at this point.
We could approve it with it in there, and then I could check it, and if it doesn't cover it, we just won't add it in there, right?
Okay, but it's proof.
It's better to take it out.
It is computer, it is technical rather than physical.
That's what we're gonna do, yeah, Dan, that's what we're...
I would, I would prove it, and then look further into it.
Yeah, if we would.
Just to make sure, I mean, we, of course, we would wanna be covered physically as well, although there's not...
Not too much, yeah.
But it's the, it's the bird's world, you know, and we're protected with the S and A, we're protected with our systems.
Right.
But for a hundred and fifty dollars, if it, if it's the IT's, uh, rebuilding of our systems and all of that, I don't know what in the world we would do if they hacked into the, the rotor. But I'd be more worried about that than our general.
Right, right.
Hoover backups for everything that we do on our computer. Um, I would, I would vote this time for, for a hundred and fifty.
I'll do a little research on it.
Yeah, times are changing.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
I'll support that.
So, what's the motion?
All right, the motion, I'm, I'm gonna repeat it, okay? Motion is to approve our liability insurance renewal of six thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. That's for the liability, also to include the terrorism coverage of a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes.
With, no, with us checking in to what the terrorism covers. Who's second then? Stevens. Motion by, by Stover, second by Stevens. Roll call vote.
Stevens?
Yes.
Anderson, or, Dan?
Dan?
Roll call vote.
Dan, roll call vote.
Dan, yes.
Anderson, yes. Allegra?
Yes.
Stover?
Yes.
So, I wanna get...
Motion carries.
Make sure I got this motion right.
Right.
You're gonna pay the six thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and the one fifty, if it covers the computers and stuff, okay?
That's what I wrote.
Okay. Next on the agenda, resignation of Pink Pinkwigs. What did I say?
Stan Pinkwigs, resignation of Pinkwigs.
Okay, I thought it...
I'm going to accept the resignation of Stan Pinkwigs from the planning commission, the township board's thing.
Yeah, I'll support that, Stan, been, he clearly grew up here in the township down Church Road. Um, of course, he had his business there on Lindsey Road, his cider mill and that, and he's been a big part of this community for a long time. Okay, Dan, I'm saying that Stan's been a member of the Casco Township his whole life, and he's been a vital member of this community, and he's gonna be, um, chose to retire him and his wife down in Virginia, I mean, Georgia.
It's gonna be a Georgia bulldog.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
As well as the loss of the community, because the end of that side, I agree.
I agree, I agree. All right, sounds good. It's a Casco business. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Motion by Stover to accept resignation of Stan Pinkwigs, uh, supported by Stevens. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mo, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the...
If we sign Stan, uh, some kind of...
We will.
On behalf of the township for his service?
Yes, we will. Make a note of that to send...
I didn't hear what he said.
We wanna send him our, a note of appreciation.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is to approve appointment of Gina Kaczynski to the planning commission.
I made a motion to appoint Gina Kaczynski to the planning commission.
Well, can I, um, can I ask a little bit of questions before I take the motion? Um, hi, Mrs. Kaczynski, how you doing?
I've known Mrs. Kaczynski, who built that, who did that quote for us twenty-some years ago, and has also been in Casco Township for, how many years, Gina?
Forty.
Forty years.
All right, no, I mean, it'll be good to have you on the, the planning commission, I, I tell people come aboard, you're always learning, so, I mean, we have some people, they, they kinda felt overwhelmed, feel overwhelmed, but it's just gonna take a long time, I mean, I've been on in law over twenty years, I'm still learning. So, our, your first opportunity will be a week from tonight. We have, uh, our meeting.
Okay.
Okay. I'll support that.
Thank you. Okay.
So, are the meetings like monthly, at certain, at certain day, I would like to notify, or...
Yeah, the Tues, the third Tuesday, so it'd be like the week following the onboard meeting.
Okay.
On occasion, if there's nothing to discuss, we'll, um, cancel a meeting, so not to, um, have the, um, pay the planner, they come in here.
And it's at, also at seven?
Yeah, at seven, that's correct.
Motion by Stover, supported by Stevens, to approve Gina Kaczynski to be put on the planning commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, next on the agenda, to approve appointment of Dale Allegra to be the liaison between the planning commission and the ZBA.
I'll make a motion to accept Dale Allegra as the liaison between the planning commission and Zo Porter Fields.
I'll support.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson, to approve Dale Allegra in the liaison between the planning commission and, and the ZBA. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Next on the agenda is the bids for the plumbing work that needs to be done on this bathroom underneath. I had two people come out, um, Mr. Wagner's plumbing was suggested from Mr. St. John's. And I had Jacob take me through and show me what he was going to do. His work was the same as Mr. Ames. So, I would... Yeah, it was kind of a no-brainer. I don't know what Mr. Ames was thinking of when he had this price, uh, I don't know if he thought, because I was a woman?
Well, I don't know, but, um, it's, it's time immaterial, so either it's time is expensive, or it's material...
And it could be that he, you know, he's an older plumbing, and he has a lot of people of, you know, and it would cost more. He, I know he's a very good company, and I think this Wagner is up and coming. Let's give him a go.
Okay, you make a motion to that?
Thank you, host.
I'll support that.
All right. Motion by Stover to go with Wagner Plumbing, supported by Stevens, the amount of one thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars to fix our, um, plumbing underneath the bathroom in the win, in the women bathroom, in the basement. That will be a roll call vote.
Stevens?
Yes.
Dan?
Roll call vote, Dan.
Anderson, yes. Allegra?
Yes.
Stover?
I'm gonna turn Dan.
I'm forgetting to turn you. Okay. Okay, all right. All right.
Okay.
You're no grief there, Dan.
All right, next on the agenda is to... To approve the appointment of Vicki Hope as deputy clerk. Uh, what I didn't put down was her amount of her pay, it will be fifteen dollars, which is all starting...
For an hour.
Fifteen dollars, that's it. No, it's our own money, starting.
No, are you chasing the money for it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, well, my mother-in-law.
Okay. I bet, did she teach you a lot?
Oh, yeah. Oh, well, okay.
No, I, I'll support that, I see you have Denise Pensky.
Who made the motion?
Did you work with Denise?
Um, I, I do some of the school family, and I work with their appointments.
Okay, I grew up with Denise.
Stover made the motion, supported by Stevens.
Thank you.
Yeah. Now, you, you're a little extort.
Yeah. No.
No, I don't think so, no. Did you hear, Dan, we're approving the deputy clerk?
We have a Hope back at the township hall.
All right. Motion by Stover, supported by Stevens, to approve Vicki Hope as our deputy clerk.
And it's good that, I mean, according to state law, we have a deputy.
She has Dan.
I have Dan, I know.
Well, yeah, but, um, a deputy, though, who's not arrested, yes.
Yeah, we have to, MTA.
Okay, good, Dan. All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The Hope being the grace... I miss your mother-in-law, too.
I miss her, too.
All right, there we go. Okay. Next on the agenda is to approve our park and rec local mileage. What is the, oh, I see, I see.
We have, we have to go over, uh, this, just, um, before I send in.
Okay, cool, take it away.
At the top, uh, you can see here, this is all two thousand nineteen information, but in the little square, um, at the, at the end, the township board is to write, um, a summary of what we hope to do with the, uh, money that is coming to us, um, give them a little outline of the year to come.
We're in the process of developing a master plan for the park.
Yes, and we will hopefully, at some point, with the sign put up, but there's much to be done before that, because we have to figure out where.
Yep.
So, I will fill out that little, um...
Square.
Square, um, correct whatever needs to be corrected at the top. Jennifer, do you want to be the contact person?
It doesn't matter, if you want me to contact, it's fine.
No, it, it doesn't matter to me, just if somebody gets an email, just pass it around.
Yep, yep.
Um, so I'll correct the, is, what is your email address?
It's already on there.
Just take the P off.
Just take the P off. Okay, I'll correct that, and I correct this, and write a little paragraph, and I will send it off tomorrow.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty request for local mileage distribution for park and rec. Support.
Motion made by Anderson, supported by Stover, to approve our parks and rec local mileage. Roll call vote.
Should we get the amount of the...
What are they doing on that?
Um, eighteen thousand, six hundred and nine dollars.
No, that was last year. That was last year, I don't know what it's been, I'm not sure what it is.
Oh, we don't know.
No, it, it, it just...
Oh, that was last year.
Yeah, that was last, this is everything, this is two thousand thirteen.
This is, this is still out, so will you move that, do that?
I see.
Yeah. So, then, then we don't need a roll call vote.
Well, we're, we're receiving money, we're not...
Well, we do.
Then we do?
Do we, 'cause there's an amount there.
Isn't roll call with you, with your spend?
Bending money.
Technically, you could use a roll call for anything.
We're receiving, we're receiving money, if we approve this...
We're gonna receive money.
To be one of our two thousand twenty.
We'll just do roll call, just...
Yes, Dan?
Yes.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Allegra, yes. Stover?
Yeah, I knew it was roll call for anything.
Yes, good one. Okay. Yes, I know, I didn't throw any eyes in tonight. I know, payment of the bill, are there any questions on payment of the bills from anybody?
I made a motion to approve the bill to split it.
Support.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Stover, to pay our bills. Roll call vote.
Stevens?
Yes.
Dan?
Pay the bills.
Dan, we're up to paying the bills.
It's so funny, all of you are yelling.
Anderson, yes. Allegra, yes. Stover?
Delay on your left corner.
Stover.
They're all yelling.
Delaying on that. You said, yes, but...
That's funny.
Okay, we're up to citizens' comments. Everybody wanna make a comment?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, what's your comment, Dan?
If you had one other, I believe, um, someone else, or this, in a meeting without us, and if we had one other computer, one other person as a network, with a video and audio, I think it would look, uh, much easier for everyone, and it would have, uh, the competition that we find. It was just a suggestion, and I think it would be easier to have one or two.
If we had two laptops?
Yeah, one person would sign it, and a lot of hours just to be applied, but if it was another person, they'd all appear. Three of us would appear on the top, and four people would be heard on the string, and four people would be heard on the light. And I think that's, uh, a little loud, that, yeah.
Wow, we'll find out.
Yeah, we'll look into that, Dan. We'll look into that. Hey, Joe, don't hit him, Joe. Dan, we'll look into that. Um, okay, I, I have a couple, we're gonna have a planning commission meeting a week from tonight. We're only gonna be discussing, uh, three, four items. Um, we were gonna do the site plan review for, um, North Point here, so they get their project rolling. Um, we'll discuss some parking, uh, requirements in front of structures. Um, we'll do the general review about the, um, fireworks ordinance for the township, and then we'll be discussing the marijuana. We've put on hold the park... Um, we've put on hold the park, um, uh, site plan review because we wanna give people the opportunity to participate. We have to by law keep it, the number of people in here, ten people maximum, or else people electronically could come in on Zoom. We're also gonna open the front door so people wanna stand outside and participate.
Can I ask you, where do the ten people come from? Who said that?
That's the state department.
Justice.
So it doesn't matter what size the room is? We have an enormous room, we can only have.
If we, if we had it outside, we could have up to a hundred.
But inside, it doesn't matter how big it is, it can be in an auditorium and you can all come talk about it.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure the size, like they were saying.
Or what it is, it's.
But, yeah, we're, we're limited on ten. I mean, we, it's just the.
You have to start.
Okay.
Yeah, a week ago. Yeah, a week ago, Riley Township. Um, a week ago, Riley Township had a very contentious annual meeting and they had it outside. My brother-in-law was there. He says they probably exceeded over a hundred, okay. Dan, a week ago, Riley Township had a very contentious annual meeting. They had it outside. My brother-in-law says that there, he attended and he says there's probably well exceeded a hundred people. But they had a gazebo in which they, the board members could sit under. We have that out here, we can do it outside. Matter of fact, maybe barbecue too. All right, that's, that's all.
Mr. Miller? I made the motion to adjourn.
I'll support, we're adjourning, motion to adjourn, Dan.
Motion by Stover, supported by Dan, to adjourn.
Dan, okay, Colleen, make them up.
Yeah, we're gonna give it to Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
What time does somebody have?
Seven fifty-two.
Thank you.